I'll open the board of selectmen meeting on Wednesday, June seventh at six thirty. Mark Collins, President Josh Andrew, President Gene Canty is not going to make it tonight. We have a call. To opening remarks, let me be to the opening remarks first and then Josh, I'll ask you if you have any. Two thousand twenty-three resident parking stickers now available for purchase at the hat.org. Parking stickers are ten dollars each, all outstanding bills must be paid to the town. The census farm must be completed. Compost area is open on Wednesday, Wednesdays and Saturdays from nine AM to three PM two thousand twenty-three. Resident parking sticker required. Visit the public works page at the hat.org for a full list of acceptable material. Recycling for metal, white goods, TVs, computers last Saturday of each month until October twenty-eighth from eight AM to twelve PM behind the DPW garage on Flash Road. A two thousand twenty-three resident stickers are required. Visit the public works department at the hat.org for acceptable materials. Certain fees may apply. Employment opportunities, paid part-time internship at Town Hall. Send a cover letter and resume to Kate Taylor at the hat.org by June fifteenth. Full job description at the hat.org on the employment opportunities page. Town Hall will be closed on Monday, June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three in observance of Juneteenth holiday. Annual fireworks show will be, this year will be Saturday, July eighth, two thousand twenty-three, starting at nine PM from Bailey's Hill. Market by the Sea, formerly the Hot Finals Market, will begin Saturday, will be on Saturday, ten AM, one PM, one PM at Flash Road Park beginning July fifteenth, August nineteenth, September sixteenth, and October fourteenth. For more information, want to be covered, Brenda, visit the market page at the hat.org or email Kate Taylor at the hat.org. That's it for open comments. Josh, do you have any open comments?
I don't have anything to add, but I know Michelle Capone, who's the Chair of the Housing Production Plan Committee, wanted to make the public service announcement. Is this a good time for that, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Michelle.
Hi, thanks, everyone. So I just wanted to remind folks that next Thursday, June fifteenth at seven o'clock, the Housing Committee is going to be having its second community event at Town Hall. This second event is going to bring together our goals and the strategies to the community so we can talk about our next step, our next phase in the housing plan that we are developing. It's, we're hoping that, you know, people will turn out. Certainly, we'll be talking about sites. We're going to look how those sites align with the goals, and we really welcome people's feedback. There'll be some activities there for folks to participate in, and we're really looking forward to an inactive experience. Following that, the following week, we're going to be releasing an open house survey to the town, and we hope that residents will take a look at that survey and participate and contribute to the survey so we can gather more feedback.
Michelle, I missed it. Did you say this was an in-person meeting?
Yes, this is going to be in-person at Town Hall at seven PM on June fifty.
And so no Zoom component?
Zoom, not to my knowledge, no. We might be able to broadcast it, but that's still an open item that we need to follow up with Town Hall.
Okay, I know there's been a lot of, well, I've heard, you know, some chat about this topic. You know, people are curious about what the plans might be and what locations could be affected. So this is a great opportunity to learn straight from the committee, so.
Thank you.
Forward to it.
Great.
Thank you, Michelle. This will be the second public engagement meeting that we've had. The first one was well-attended. Hopefully, we get this one to be well-attended. Michelle, you might want to just mention that for people who want to learn more about the Housing Production Plan and some background material, that information can be found on the hot webpage?
Yes, we have a dedicated webpage on the hot.org. If Tony opens the chat later on during the citizen's forum, I can put the link in there for folks that are on, and they can take a look at it. We currently have some documents out there, including a recent study on our housing needs assessment and some other documents. So we encourage people to definitely go and take a look at that and certainly come back to us with any questions or feedback.
Yeah, I think it's a good primer for people who may be joining us for the first time on this subject to get up to speed on what it is, a housing production plan is, why we're doing it, sort of some of the substance to it all before they come to the meeting. I think they'll realize how important of a project this really is for the town, and it could have long-lasting impacts. So I think that I encourage people to to go online, take a look at this information, and to join us next week at the public engagement. Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay, we have new business. Do you want to do the motions, Josh?
I can, but Tony, did you want to read this motion in particular?
It's a long one, so I figured I'd read it for you.
Thank you.
This, this is, this has to do with the MWRA borrowing that we vote every year. And it just requires, bond council requires the board of selectmen to take this vote in order for us to be able to utilize that authorization. So bear with me, I'll just read through it. It's pretty long, but I'll try and go through as fast as I can. I, the clerk of the Board of Selectmen of the town in Ahant, Massachusetts, certify that at a meeting of the board held June seventh, two thousand twenty-three, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and at which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody, voted that the sale of the seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-dollar water bond of the town dated June twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, to Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, the authority is hereby approved, and the town treasurer or the, or other appropriate town official is authorized to execute on behalf of the town a loan agreement and a financial assistance agreement with the authority with respect to the bond. The bond shall be payable without interest on May fifteenth of the years and in the principal amounts as follows: yearly installments in the amount of seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars for the years of two thousand twenty-four to two thousand thirty-three. Further voted that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing vote. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in nine forty CMR twenty-nine point oh three two B. At least forty-eight hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting, and remain so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberations or decisions in connection with the sale of the bond were taken in executive session, all in accordance with general law, chapter thirty A, subsections eighteen through twenty-five as amended.
Good job. So moved.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded for the discussion of the motion.
It's a question, just the fact that Chuck McCanty isn't here. I don't, I don't know that we have a quorum, but is that an issue with the way that thing is written?
No, as long as, as long as there's a quorum, we're fine. Again, you know, these are, the MWRA borrowing is a zero percent interest loan. As an MWRA community, we have access to that program. It's authorized at town meeting, and we're going to be utilizing the past, I think, three years' worth of authorizations to get some important water main work done throughout the town.
That's great, Tony. And is there, how much, do you know offhand how much we have left in this authorization that we could borrow?
I believe we've authorized, our cap for our town is five hundred thousand a year. And so I think over the last three years, that puts us at one point five, and this is to utilize seven, seven thousand, seven, seventy-five, seven hundred thousand, seventy-five, four fifty. So whatever the difference is between that and one point five, I think would be our leftover.
Well, I wish everybody could get a loan at zero percent these days, but, so, any further discussion on the motion?
Uh, no.
Seeing here and then, roll call vote?
Josh Andrew, my?
Mark Collins, I.
I think I see a fire coming out of someone's chimney on Turner Beach. Shoot.
We'll pause.
Yeah. What's the, what's the fire department's number? One, two, three, four?
Oh, nine, one, one. Yeah.
Hold on one second. Other back one minute, yeah?
Yep. This is crazy.
Yeah.
Just put him on mute while he's on the call.
Tony, any other updates on activities going on in the heart? Something I've been to attention?
To fill some dead air.
We fill some dead air.
It was a, we had a busy day at the Town Hall. We've had, we put new phone systems in at the Town Hall. Our old phone system about six months ago was no longer supported and was, you know, every time we had a technical issue, it was, it was tough to fix. So today, we were, we had Mass Telecom in the Town Hall trying to fix. They installed the new phones about four or five months ago, but we've been having issues with them working properly because, you know, we're, it's, everything now is digital and wireless, and, you know, it's just an older building with an older system, so. Hopefully, they make those, the fixes, hopefully, the fixes they make today solves the issues that we've been having. I've had a lot of complaints from residents about not being able to get through to the Town Hall. And trust me, we've been, everybody, even, even internally, the phones have been tough. So we've been, we've been working Verizon on getting Mass Telecom into the Town Hall. Hopefully, today, the fixes that they, that they are working on, they're still there, working on them now. Hopefully, it works.
So I know, Tony, you're trying to connect with K, with fiber optics, aren't you, all of the public buildings?
Yeah.
Will they be connected with our phone system too?
Well, the idea is that with, by connecting all the buildings with fiber cable, we'll be able to utilize one internet network, one network. So, and the phone, phone lines are integrated into that network. So, yeah, should, it should, the phones, once that happens, it should, they should work as if we're all under one roof.
Well, that would be great.
So I apologize to any residents out there that have had a hard time getting in touch with us at the Town Hall. We are there. We've just been, hopefully, it's fixed after today.
And I know that the other day you attended the Economic Development Forum over at North Shore Credit College with the Governor's Office. Any updates on that?
Yeah, it was probably about a hundred and fifty people there. It was really well-attended. They'll be, they're traveling across the state. They're mandated by state law to put together an economic, economic development plan. And, you know, so they broke every, everybody up into different groups and different subjects. I, I sat at the workforce table and made many pitches about the, what great jobs municipal government provides and that they're great local opportunities. And just talked a lot about, you know, transportation was a huge topic, you know, in any economic development discussion. So a lot of talk about, you know, the ferry, the MBTA train station, how long it takes to get to Boston, a lot of things like that, but it was a great meeting. And I believe there, anybody can, you know, write in comments by going on to the Executive Office of Economic Development. Now, do you remember, it used to be HED, but they've, they've now created a new Secretariat strictly for housing, so now it's just Executive Office of Economic Development.
I'm very encouraged with the governor and the Lieutenant Governor. I've been reading in the Globe, most of their appointments have been really from the municipal level, from town managers, town administrators, not the, I hope they don't come after you, Tony, but it seems like they're focusing on their, you know, sort of their administrative staff, on people who are coming from municipalities who have a, a good understanding of what it takes to make government deliver to the people. I mean, there's nothing, there's nothing more, I guess, you know, being, being an administrator on the municipal level is really ground level. And, you know, you're subject to, every time you go to the store, every time you walk outside, you know, a direct impact that people talk to you about things, and, you know, taking people like you, you know, people from the municipal level and appointed them to this, these positions. I know the Housing Secretary, I believe, the new Housing Secretary is from Worcester as the city manager there. So that's encouraging. I think that that sort of administration will do well.
I think, I think a lot of that comes from Mayor Driscoll's vision, right? You know, and she's been, she's been such a champion of the North Shore and has been such a help to our town, even throughout, you know, through COVID and all those regional, you know, efforts that we've gone. She's been the leader in a lot of those discussions and has been able to pave the way for municipalities small like us to be heard. So, you know, yeah, it's exciting. They got a great crew, a great staff there. It was a good meeting. And they were appreciative to have Nahat, you know, there and be involved in the discussion, so.
It's encouraging, you know, lots of times they, you know, get people with, from academia or big resumes and stuff, but really, what you want to do is listen to people who have been, you know, in the trenches for a number of years. So that's encouraging.
Josh, I muted you when you.
Yeah, yeah, it's definitely a fire. Austin's on his way over or there already.
Is it chimney fire?
Yeah, see flames coming out of the chimney.
Was it called in?
I just got a text from Austin. I'm here, but not seeing anything. Okay, walk, walk to my house and look down. Well, anyway.
Okay, well, the entrance to the rescue once again. Okay, Josh, we have some minutes to approve?
Yeah. I moved at the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from March first, two thousand twenty-three, in April twelfth, two thousand twenty-three.
Seconded. Any discussion on motion? Seeing here and then, roll call vote?
Josh Andrew, my?
Mark Collins, I. We had some event requests, Josh?
Yep, I moved at the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the following event requests. Torrance and hair, one mile and three mile road race on Tuesday, July, July fourth, two thousand twenty-three, starting in front of the fire station at eight AM. Registration starts at seven thirty AM. Also, the black, the Barefoot Black Tie Party on Saturday, August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at Short Beach in front of the Life Saving Station, starting at six PM. The annual, the annual Hoopanico Road Race on September ninth, two thousand twenty-three, starting at ten AM in front of the Life Saving Station. And the annual Swim Autumn Beach Cleanup on Sunday, September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, from eleven AM to two PM at Doggy Beach.
Seconded. Discussion on the motion. And some background here, Josh, you want me to take it? You want to take it?
I can do it. Discussion and background. The route map for the Torrance and Hair one mile and three mile races can be found on the community calendar at nahat.org. Peter Barber's on the, on the call to give us some information on the Barefoot Black Tie event. We'll get to you, Peter, in just one second. I'm going to read through these. Bob Field is also on the call to give information about the annual Hoopanico Road Race. The, the roadmap of that can also be found in the hot.org. And the Swim Beach Cleanup organizers will meet at the Lowlands parking lot. Bags will be provided and is suggested that volunteers wear gloves. Cleanup will be on Doggy and Short Beaches. So, Peter, you want to tell us about your event?
Sure. I'm sure some of you remember, many, many years ago, we had a Barefoot Black Tie. It's a formal event, which basically means you dress formal. Women have worn gowns, men wore tuxedos or suits, or their rendition of what formal is. So we did have folks with tuxedo T-shirts and things like that. It's a very elegant event. It's a black tie on the beach. We'll have past, heavy pasteur durs. It's on August nineteenth to coincide with a two o'clock high tide. There'll be open bar. Hopefully, we'll get a one-day liquor license. Brett Henry will be doing the catering, and we're looking to raise money for the Council on Aging's kitchen renovation project.
Thank you, Peter. I do, and I did attend the, the first Black Tie event. I don't know, don't even tell me what year that was.
I know, I can't remember. I'll have to ask Kathy what it, what it was. And actually, if anyone is interested in, in helping out in this endeavor, please reach out to me because I know there's a lot of things that need to happen, and I'd appreciate help.
All right, will do, Peter. Thank you for putting this together. And high heels are not required, right?
Yeah, no, we actually have a, believe it or not, we have a shoe check-in. So when you get there, you, we'll have some, some younger folks there to collect your shoes and, and put kind of like a jacket check that you might have at a wedding or something so that you, you don't have to worry about having your shoes lost or stolen or, or left out on the beach.
Maybe we could, maybe we could take the shoes. And I remember the old days of the Town Hall, we used to have our dances with Mrs. Slagle. We used to have the Cinderella dance where everybody would throw one of their shoes in the middle of the, the ring, and, you know, the boys would run out and all, all the, all the, all the girls would throw their shoes out in the middle, and the boys would run out and grab a shoe, and whoever's shoe you had, you had to dance. But, uh, maybe we won't go there.
We'll have a lot of fans, so there will be hopefully some dancing.
Thanks, Peter, for putting that together. Bob, do you want to talk about the Hoopanico Race? Are you there, Bob?
You lose, Bob? He was here.
No, I'm here, I'm here. You caught me off-guard there. It was so quick. I can't believe Peter Barber was so quick. I know, I know, but Peter Barber is a, a, a great steward in the community, and, you know, we're, we're happy to support him in the Black Tie and his effort to raise money for that great cause of redoing that kitchen for the Council of Aging. Yeah, so we're excited about the twenty twenty-three version of the historic Hoopanico Five Mile Road Race. We'll continue the tradition. We have, you know, scheduled the date for the weekend after Labor Day, September ninth, and we're moving the start time to a more traditional road race start time at ten AM, hoping to draw a few more runners. The last couple of years, we've used this as a fundraiser for the American Legion Welfare Fund. And last year, even though we actually had less runners than the first year, we raised more money. So we're really appreciative of the community's support. And this year, we will be dedicating the race to World War II veteran and frankly, American hero Lieutenant Colonel Ken Gavin, and look forward to, to that as well. So, yeah, look forward to the continued support from the community with the Town's Hoopanico Road Race.
That sounds great, Bob, and thank you, and thank Peter for all the work that you do on a volunteer basis of putting this stuff together and making the heart a really nice community. And I'm just wondering, I'm hoping that your wife Linda's ankle is recovered so she can run this.
Well, if it's recovered, she will not be running.
Okay. All right, thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody from Swim about the cleanup? Well, the cleanup.
It's not till September, so.
Okay, we have some one-day liquor licenses to approve.
Take a vote?
Oh, did we?
No, we didn't vote.
You didn't take a vote. Any further discussion on the motion? Thanks, Dan. Seeing and hearing done, roll call vote?
Josh Andrew, my?
Mark Collins, I. Okay, we have some liquor licenses related to these events.
Yes. Moved the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the all liquor one-day license for the Barefoot Black Tie Party on Saturday, August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, on Short Beach from six PM to eleven PM.
Seconded. Discussion, Peter? I don't know if you need to say anymore.
Just that Brett Henry will be, again, supplying food and the bartenders and will be using his, his license and insurance.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing, hearing then, roll call vote?
Josh Andrew, my?
Mark Collins, I. We have a citation to a new business in town. Do you have the citation, Josh? I don't.
I do have it open, yeah, so I can read the citation. Be it known on this day, June seventh, two thousand twenty-three, that the Nahat Board of Selectmen hereby extends its welcome to Ms. Wendy Kessler on behalf of the community of the town of Nahat. We welcome you and wish you good, wish you luck on your future business endeavors. Sincerely, Mark C. Collum, Chairman, and Antonio Barletta, Town Administrator.
Okay, that's great. I hope Wendy, Tony, can you tell me a little bit, tell us a little bit about Wendy's business? I know that you attended a opening.
Wendy's on the call. Yet we had a ribbon cutting with the Greater Lynn Chamber of Commerce last week. Wendy's in the hot residence. She has started a new business that does some training on scam awareness, does some training on active shooter response preparation. It even does some anger management training. So a number of different things. We're very happy. It even does some anger management training. So a number of different things. We're very happy and look forward to working with Wendy, but she's on the call. And if it's all right with you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have Wendy. She can describe it a lot better than I can.
Go ahead, Wendy.
Thank you, Chairman Cullen and Vice Chairman Antrim and Mr. Barletta. Mr. Barletta, thank you for being at the ribbon cutting. It meant a lot to me. And thank you for the citation. I, I thank you. If I could just take a couple of minutes of your time, I'll just explain to you basically what my business does. You did a pretty, Josh, I'm sorry. Tony, you did a pretty good job explaining it, but I'll give you just a little bit more information. So there's three parts to my business. One is the Alive Active Shooter Survival Awareness. The second part is an NRA, Refuse to be a Victim Program, and the third part is a twelve-week anger management program. I just want everybody to know it's not anything to do with firearms and there's nothing to do with self-defense in these programs because some people automatically hear NRA and go towards firearms. So the Alive Active Shooter Program is, would you know how to survive? So if an employee or an employee's family member or just a random person entered your business, would you know what to do to survive? So we want to teach you the survival mindset and the security mindset of how you would act if something like this happened. We have two modules that we offer. The first module is really an educational component where we come in and we teach you the five steps of alive, which are an acronym for assess. Leave, impede, violence, and expose, and that will teach you the five steps of keeping yourself safe in an active shooter situation. And we have a second module that can be looked at, which is a hands-on. So we actually walk you through the steps of the five steps of the Alive Program. Michael Julian actually created this program in two thousand and fourteen. He is the owner and the president of MPS Security in California. And he's had quite a good outcome with his trainings. The Refuse to be a Victim Program has all kinds of different modules to it. We talk about the psychology of the criminal predators, home security, automobile security, travel security, physical security, and then we have modules available for parents and children. So we can break it down from kindergarten right up to pre, preschool, I'm sorry, through elementary, and then we can go through middle school to high school. And it's tailored to the needs of the children in those grades. We also have a workplace module and we have one for seniors where we can talk about scams. We can talk about financial and elder abuse and all kinds of things that unfortunately our senior citizens have to go through if they're not given the proper tools of how to stay away from being taken advantage of. The program was actually with the Refuse to be a Victim founded in nineteen ninety-three for women, and in nineteen ninety-seven, they found the need that men need these kind of programs just as much as women did. There's no prerequisites. You don't have to be an NRA member. They don't ask you to become an NRA member to take these programs. And the final program that we offer is called New Focus. It's a twelve-week anger management program. We can take referrals on a self-referral basis from the courts, from lawyers, attorneys. Anybody can take this program. We do give a certificate of completion after the twelve weeks is up. And it teaches people how to deal with anger in ways that is not lashing out and not using physical or emotional abuse against others. So we hope that our program will give people other options of how to deal with anger. And that's really about it in a nutshell. I could take your time all night, but I won't. I thank you for giving me some time to talk about my business and I thank you for the citation and hope to have an opportunity to work with the Town of Nahat. As well as other individuals and businesses and, and give you some information that in this world is unfortunately needed in these crazy days.
Thank you, Wendy. And I would, I would agree. Unfortunately, these are types of skills and programs that, that are needed today, frankly. And it's, it's, it's sad, but I'm glad that, you know, you've had the foresight to, to recognize this and, and put programs together that can help people address some of these issues. And I look forward to. Working with you in the Town of Nahat and some of the guys, maybe in the schools or senior citizens. Those types of things and wish you the best of luck.
Thank you so much. And if anybody is interested, they can get more information. I sound like a commercial now at focusonsafetyallone word.us. My email address is there. My phone number is there. Please, if you, if you have any interest or questions or concerns, please feel free to reach out to me. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have or send you more information so that you can get a little bit more information about the programs that I offer.
Okay, thanks, Wendy. You might want to stay on for a while. We have a Citizens Forum coming up and some citizens may have some questions addressed to you, so.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to really echo what you said, Mark. Wendy, best of luck with your business and. It's especially the, you know, the live shooter thing. It's a sad situation that we have in this country and. We're not facing up to it as, as a country and I encourage anybody and everybody to reach out to our legislators and bring some sanity to this, the situation. As Mark said, you know, unfortunately, the, the services you offer are critically important until we come up to our collective sanity. I mean, it's not just, you know, this, this mass shooting in the US almost. Almost twice a week. And it's not just somewhere else. Last weekend, there was two shootings in Rivier Beach. You think you go onto the beach, you know, for a family day and there's two shootings. It's crazy. But I'm a little off-script here, so I'll leave it at that.
Thanks, Josh.
There's the other, the other piece too. So obviously, we do a lot of training already related to active shooter in the school and at the town hall and, you know, provided through our police department, but we're going to be working with Wendy. In future opportunities like that too, but also, you know, the scam awareness training that she offers. It, we're going to be working with the, the Council on Aging and maybe even more so with, with AI and. Chat GPT and these new types of technologies out there, you know, teaching people, you know, how to be, what to be aware of, what signals to be aware of, to make sure that you're not being scammed. And, you know, is, is, is another skill set, skill set that's, you know, really important to share. So I look forward to working with Wendy on that stuff, too.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Tony. Thank you, Wendy. Okay. I'm going business, Tony.
Coyote awareness. So I have a statement here I want to read. I'm, I'm likely going to stick to this statement. I know, I'm sure we're going to get a lot of questions and/or comments in the Citizens Forum. After recent events that have taken place in, in our town over Memorial Day weekend, but. I'm likely going to try to stick to this statement as, as best as possible. I'd like to update the board and the community regarding the town's efforts to address the longstanding issue of habituated coyotes. Over Memorial Day weekend, the town received a report that a habituated coyote had attacked a dog that was being walked by its owner. Unfortunately, that dog did not survive the impacts of that attack. I met with the owner for more than an hour last week to hear his story and to share the steps that the town has taken. I can say unequivocally that the owner was not careless, and this was an aggressive attack that could not have been avoided. In fact, even when the owner was able to pick up his dog and repeatedly attempted to haze the coyote away, it continued to advance towards him and attempted to take his dog out of his arms. Wildlife acting in that type of aggressive behavior towards residents is a public safety threat. In December, the Board of Selectmen authorized the signing of a community services agreement to bring in USDA Wildlife Services to help the town safely and effectively remove what mass wildlife deemed as problem animals. Not all coyotes, but an attempt to solve problem animal issues. After speaking with a number of wildlife experts with decades of experience, the town determined a limited program would be the best course forward, given the number of unique circumstances in Nahat. We are not the first town to attempt to remove problem animals. This decision to engage with USDA was not reached lightly. As town leadership, we are aware that some people are unhappy with this approach or unhappy with the limited amount of information we have been able to provide. A regular release of information does not allow the USDA to perform its task effectively while protecting the safety of our residents. And, and here's why. Within days of announcing that agreement last year, the town learned of significant efforts to hinder the effectiveness of the program before it even began. Throughout the program, there were calls for protests and attempts to interfere with USDA efforts. It's possible that this interference made the initial operation less effective than it could have been. There is no easy solution to dealing with the coyote population in our town. As we have stated in the past, the town must be able to coexist with coyotes. That do not pose a public safety threat. Almost all of the town's efforts is dedicated to avoiding situations like the incident that occurred over Memorial Day weekend. However, however, when a coyote becomes a public safety threat, the town will address that swiftly and appropriately. As a town administration, we have made a good faith effort to find a measured, balanced approach. This will take time. We ask residents to take measures to remain safe and to report encounters to the town as soon as possible. Follow the guidance provided by the town, the state, and coyote experts, all of, all of which is available on the hot.org. And I hope to provide another update when circumstances allow.
Thank you, Tony. I can't, I couldn't agree with you more. I'm not going to get into this much right now or even in Citizens Forum. But I just want you to know that I support your efforts one hundred percent. I think you're doing an outstanding job in this effort. None of us like the, the point we're, we're at right this point, but we're, we're here and something needs to be done. So. I, I support. All the actions that are taking place, that are taking place here. Thank you.
I agree.
Okay, Josh. Preserving each point.
I don't have anything new to report. I think we're, we're still, well, I know we're still in the deposition phase and you and I have depositions coming up later this, this month. But otherwise, I don't think there's anything new to report.
No, I don't think so either.
I'll just add that what I thought was a fire seems to have been a smoky furnace light off, so all clear.
Glad you had watch up there on the. Okay, great. Town Administrator, two four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Town meeting recap. I want to thank all residents that attended the meeting. And everyone that participated in helping with the planning and the carrying out of town meeting. It was well-attended. It was a successful day. We got, you know, all important business done. And I just want to give a special shout-out to the Finance Committee, the Community Preservation Committee, the Planning Board, the School Committee. The Town Moderator and the Town Clerk. A lot of work, a lot of work goes into, it's about a six-month effort, as I spoke about a lot before town meeting. And it doesn't, it's not a success without, you know, residents attending and participating in the process. So I just want to, want to say thank you to the residents for participating, for coming on a, on a nice Saturday to, to get the town's business done. And. We, a week, a week later, Memorial Day, I want to say that the Memorial Day Committee, you know, did yet again a very, an excellent job in preparing. For the Memorial Day celebrations. What a special day it is and has always been. Even this, you know, and, and every year it seems to get better and better and, you know, I don't know how they. Order that type of perfect weather every single year, but somehow they make that happen as well. And I think one of the biggest noticeable improvements this year was if, if anyone was able to get to the Wharf or the ceremony at the Wharf. This year was the first year, I think, ever that people who were at the Wharf actually could hear what was being said during that ceremony on the pier. Thankfully, the. American Legion and the Memorial Day Committee came together, raised some funds to have a speaker system installed for that event. And I know I was there and it was the first time I actually ever heard, you know, what was said. And it was, and it was quiet on the, in the parking lot and in Margarine Park. You could hear a pin drop. Everybody was, was paying attention, so. You know, it was just such a great day and I just want to commend, you know, the Memorial Day Committee, the American Legion. You know, and, and everyone that's involved. The DBW obviously does a lot of work preparing the town for that day as well. So another thank you goes out to, to everybody involved in that. Fireworks in July activities. We, we spoke a lot about the July activities already through the event, event requests. July eighth, so is, will be our fireworks show. When, when we went through COVID and a lot of, a lot of communities suspended fireworks shows because of that, we were one of them as well. And, and during that time, a lot of the fireworks companies, the pyrotechnic companies in the area actually went out of business. So unfortunately, we lost our hold on the Fourth of July spot on the calendar. When, when we, you know, followed through with those COVID restrictions on events. But we were working with the company that we, that we utilize for this and trying to get back to the Fourth of July. On the, on, you know, looking at it as glass half-full, the last two years, July fourth has been in the middle of the, of the week. So last year, we, was our first year back with a fireworks show and it was Saturday, Saturday the ninth. Again, this year, it will be Saturday the eighth. So the Saturday following the Fourth of July. And we will again have a band and some food vendors and ice cream vendors at the Wharf, starting around five o'clock. And they'll be playing all the way up until the fireworks show around nine o'clock. So it was, it turned out to be a wonderful, you know, family-style event. It was a great community event and. Hopefully, we'll have a lot of people participating in that again. And, you know, today I met with the DBW Fire Department, Police Department, Emergency Management Department. And we are, you know, already putting together, you know, a number of different planning stages and putting together an action plan. You know, Josh, you mentioned what happened in Revere not that long ago. You know, that's very much on our radar. You know, we want to make sure that we have a very safe event here in the hot. So we do, it may, I know it's inconvenient to have roads closed and parking not available, but it's all part of, you know, proper planning. Um, but it's all part of, you know, proper planning uh, for the safety of those who attend the event, so. Uh, we are working through those details and we'll be getting those, getting that information out as soon as possible, so people can plan properly.
That's great, Tony. Um. Um, it's, it sounds terrific. Uh, you know, I know that um. On the eighth, the nice thing about the hunt is that you can get anywhere in the hunt by foot. Um, so leave your cars in the parking lot. Um, anyone with a disability um, in the police. Uh, can provide help to get you where you need to go safely um, and swiftly. But everybody else, just leave your cars at home. Get the kids in a wagon and walk to wherever you have to go. Uh. One of the nice things about living in a small town like the hut.
We'll have handicap spots available um, right outside the entrance to the wharf. We'll also designate handicap parking at Mitchell's Corner, which is another great vantage point uh, to see the fireworks. Um, and again, all that stuff will be. Available, like, we're, we're putting maps together and visuals so that we can uh. Put that on the website so people are aware and know ahead of time where to go.
Thanks, Tony. Appreciate it. Okay, anything else?
Uh, I just forgot to mention that uh. Water sewer bills went out this past couple of weeks and you would have noticed there was a slip in there. And a new address on your mail to address. Uh, we are implementing a. Um, an automated service of posting um. Payments for water and sewer bills. Uh, so. I know it says in the hot town hall and then there's a P O box in Reading, which may look odd. Um, but that is the accurate address. We tried to include a note in your, in your bill so that. No one was uh, confused. Uh, but uh, please, you know, utilize it. It helps us, helps the town process your payments quicker and efficiently.
So Tony, you can either pay um. By sending it to the P O box that was mailed out, you can still pay online. And you can still come up to town hall if you want with your check and pay at town hall. We prefer you do one of the first two.
Yeah, it's, i- if uh, if you, you know, certainly you could come to the town hall. A lot of, a lot of people enjoy. You know, coming up to the town hall and dropping off a payment, that's fine. Um, we may. End up sending your check to the, to Reading, to the P O box to have it processed with everything else, so it may slow down. Uh, the timeframe from, you know, the, your check actually being processed. Uh, if you want your check to be processed quickly, you know, paying online. Or mailing it directly there would be the fastest way to do it.
Great, thank you, Tony, and uh. Uh, seems like the uh, uh, well, he's not new anymore. Our town treasurer is doing a great job in uh. Automating all of this, so. I'm glad he's on top of all of this. Great job.
Okay, his, his head's spinning a little bit. But he's doing a great job.
Yeah, well, he's got good training from his family, so I'm sure he might, he might not admit it, but uh. I'm sure he's on the phone at night, every night, uh. Asking for advice and uh, as he should be. So, uh, okay, citizens' fault.
All right, as always, please announce your name and uh, address and just raise your hand. Um, and I will ask you on mute, Francine.
Tony, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, my phone froze right when you were explaining what the steps were gonna be. Can you just quickly reiterate them and then I have some questions?
Can you just state your name and address just to stay consistent?
Francine Amari Faulkner, two nine five Nahat Road.
So I read a, a pretty large statement. Um. Are you asking me to read it again or?
No, is so the plan is to bring in shop shooters again?
Well, I'm just gonna stick to the statement, you know, um, as I mentioned earlier, it's, it's. It is a, a regular release of information. Uh, does not allow the USDA to perform its tasks effectively while protecting safety of our residents, so. If we were to utilize them, I wouldn't be able to really answer that question.
Okay, so here's, here's my next question. Um, who determined that this was a habituated coyote?
Um, in any situation that we have in any type of uh. Coyote interaction, we take in the information and we share that with mass wildlife.
Okay, so, um, other information that I would like to share is. Um. Because. So this person, and I'm, I'm not at all blaming this person, it's horrible to lose a dog. So I want to make that clear that I completely sympathize with Chris Del Dado. However. There are several things that need to be taken into consideration here. First thing was.
Go any further, Francine, we took, we took. We took everything that was necessary into consideration. Mass Wildlife spoke with Chris directly. Um, so.
I still want to speak, Tony.
Go ahead.
Okay.
I just want to be careful about, you know, um.
I understand, but I want to present another side of the information that I don't feel like is being brought forward right now. Okay? Chris sadly was walking a very small dog near Bailey's Hill at ten thirty, between ten and ten thirty at night. The dog, the rule of thumb for anybody with a small dog. Is you, the dog needs to be beside you or in front of you and not more than a four to six foot leash. Because you, and you need to stay aware of your surroundings. That's rule number one for a small dog. The part about this that makes sense is when the coyote grabbed the dog and Chris turned around and heard it yelp. He yelled and the coyote dropped the dog, which is exactly what the coyote should have done. Because Chris, in essence, hazed the coyote and the coyote responded appropriately by dropping the dog. That tells me and the experts that I consulted with, and I consulted with more than one. About this incident. That, that was correct behavior for that coyote. That is not aggressive behavior. These coyotes, and another thing that's becoming clear and you can debate it or not. Is there is a food source in this area. Because the coyotes do not repeatedly. Show up on the same porches and in the same area like they are unless there's a reason to. Now, we know for a fact that there are a number of bird feeders in these areas. And there's cat litter and cat food on a porch, so even if.
All right, I need to, I need to stop you there, Francine.
Tony, it's.
You can't, I can't have you spreading false information. We have investigated. The food source um, claim that you've put forward. Uh, there is not a food source in the area, A. B, um, the. This in, as I stated, I spoke with the owner of this dog for over an hour. This coyote, after he attacked the dog. And the owner picked up his dog and hazed the coyote. He repeat, the coyote repeatedly advanced towards the owner and attempted to take the dog out of his hands. And that, I don't, we as a town, draw the line. Well, I understand you disagree. I, it doesn't matter. Um, you know, so much, the food source, if there's a food source there, we want to correct it so that these incidents don't occur. However, but the food source, the food source is not. The food source is not an excuse for us to look the other way on a coyote that attempts to. A take a dog out of a human being's hands. This is a very clear public safety threat. And that's what we're gonna, and I do not want to, I appreciate your concern, I appreciate your. Care for the situation. I can't allow you to spread information that isn't accurate. And turn this into a political debate. We have investigated it, mass wildlife has investigated it. And we are moving forward in that regard.
So Tony, why, why are the, why are the coyote?
Go ahead, Ms. Chairman.
Listen, Francine. We've been, we, as Tony said, we understand that you may have a different opinion on this matter. We, Tony has investigated this. Thoroughly. Um, uh, mass wildlife has, has investigated thoroughly. We are going to take this information as we had in the past. Discuss it with mass wildlife in their experts and we're gonna proceed from there. There are a lot of experts out there, whether they're from California or Ontario or wherever. They all, God bless them, but we can't listen to everybody. We have to go to our resources that, that have been reliable to us. Mass wildlife has provided that with us. I think our actions are appropriate. And I'm not gonna be discussing this every single meeting. We understand your position on this. We've tried to work with you on this, but we are not gonna revisit this every single selectmen's meeting.
Mark, I am the only one out there actively doing things every single day. I'm out there trying to educate people. I'm putting door hangers on in neighborhoods. I'm out there hazing coyotes. I'm doing everything to support what the town is trying to do. And, and you know, it would be good if we could work hand in hand. It's not like. You guys, you know, are pushing against what I'm trying to do and I'm trying to support what you're doing. And this is so short sighted and is gonna create more problems in the long run. And that's the part of this that's just maddening.
Right, so this, this is the issue, uh, Francine. You consider our actions to be short sighted. We don't. Okay, uh, we appreciate all the effort that you've put in. In educating the residents of the town. We really do. Tony and the Board of Selectmen have listened to you every single meeting. And we appreciate all the effort that you've done. But there were some things that, you know, the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator are gonna decide to do. And this is what we're deciding to do.
Well, Mark, I'm gonna continue to speak up until what, what you do make sense. I mean, cause this doesn't make sense.
Okay, well, that's, that's your opinion. That's your opinion.
And, and, and that's fine to have a difference in opinion, but I, I, it becomes. A dangerous political discussion. When information is being, is being said at this meeting that I know is not accurate. And I have to correct you, I don't mean any disrespect, Francine, as I've said a million times. Ninety percent, ninety-five percent of the town's efforts and your efforts are aligned. Uh, we, you know, we agree with a lot, a lot of things and we're happy with what you do. We just, when we have a public safety threat, the town is taking it very seriously. And we just don't have much tolerance for. Aggre- a coyote that acts in that aggressive manner towards a resident. And I know that. You have a difference in opinion on how to respond to that. We just have to agree to disagree. And if you want to comment about ways to avoid that situation, we're all for it.
Will you, will you give me a chance to deal with the situation?
What do you mean by that?
I can do some things that will be effective and, and will turn things around. Will you give me one or two weeks to do that?
Uh, uh, Tony has never shut you off. His phone, his phone is open. But we're not gonna be doing this every, every selectmen's meeting, Francine, I'm telling you right now, because we'll just end the climate period. I mean, I'm not gonna put up with this anymore. We've, we've listened to your positions, we will continue to listen to them. Um, you just need to understand, there may be disagreement at some point and we can, we can respectfully disagree. And I think we're at that point in, in, in a number of areas.
All right, well, I will do what I can in the meantime, okay?
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you. And I'll repeat what I said before.
Whoops.
As, as, I'm gonna repeat what I've mentioned before, um. As town leadership, we are aware that some people are unhappy with this approach. Or unhappy with the limited amount of information we have been able to provide. A regular release of information does not allow the USDA to perform its task effectively while protecting the safety of our residents. Within days of announcing the agreement, the town learned of significant efforts to hinder the effectiveness of the program before it began. Throughout the program, there were calls for protests and attempts to interfere with USDA efforts. It is possible this interference made the initial operation less effective than it could have been. Now. I repeat that because should we decide to go down that road? Should we end up in that position? Should we make that hard decision? I'm asking you, Francine, to not interfere with that process. Because. The key to it and the reason we're put in that position is to employ a safe and effective. Process. We don't want people interfering with that should we end up in that position. Because that becomes, that makes it unsafe and ineffective. All right, Brendan.
Brendan, Brendan, Veronica Homestead, two Summer Street. I had a general question about the, you mentioned. The town was gonna be uh, connecting up the various town buildings through a common internet connection. Um, wondering if the town cybersecurity has been enhanced and. Given you're gonna be connecting multiple buildings and facilities. The uh, likelihood of ransomware um, infecting one part of the town and then spreading uh, increases, and so I was wondering if the towns. Um, budgeted or at least uh, talk with their security providers about that.
Uh, we, yeah, so we're not connected yet. Uh, we have, yes, we have a um. We contract our IT services out with the company that uh, was well aware and well versed with that. We have. A number of security protections in place in each individual uh, network and building currently. Uh, so yeah, we would, that would definitely be part of the process. We wouldn't want to create any type of risk by doing that project.
All right, and then I guess the follow-up question is, do, does the town currently have a backup mechanism? So in case we fall victim to ransomware, we have a secure backup we can restore from?
We, yeah, we back up every single day.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Brendan.
Right, yeah, my, Margie Parisi, fifteen Prospect Street, Nahat Math. So my question is, are we, when you read the statement. Are you having those um, people come back in with the gun? I mean, I couldn't figure it out.
So, Margie, I think the statement said what it said. We're not gonna engage in public forum, whether or not we have them back in, I'm not having back in. And, and logically, that's a public safety issue um, that we're dealing with. So, uh, we're gonna proceed um, with a policy that we think is, is right for the situation. And um, I don't know, Tony, if you want to add to that at all.
Yeah, I, I just, exact, you're exactly right, Mark. I mean, that we, we, we haven't made a definitive decision. I can, I will tell you that we consider that coyote as a public safety threat. How we're gonna handle it, we don't know yet. We haven't decided yet. Obviously, it's a, it's not an easy decision, uh, but. In any, in any case, no matter what we do. We're gonna do it with the safety of our residents in mind, which then, you know, that's where. Uh, it limits us on how, how mu- how much information we can share. Uh, because obviously we don't want, um, you know, if we were to, if we were to go down that road again, if we were to go. Uh, if we were to try to use other types of techniques, you know, the idea is for it to be. Safe and quick, you know, I, I don't want USDA services in the heart for the entire summer. You know, or the entire year, so it's about, it's very much about, you know. Getting in and out quickly, safely, effectively, and unfortunately, that means, you know, we can't really share much information about it.
Okay, that's my concern, because I have two teenagers and in the summer. They're out and my, I have one daughter works at Ocean View, so sometimes she walks home and I, I just want to make sure nobody's gonna go out. With guns.
That's a hundred percent on our mind and um, is definitely part of our process and consideration.
Okay.
Margie, just so that, you know, this is a coordinated, you know, in the event that something like that did happen, it would be a coordinated, um, uh, event with the police, um, wildlife, the, uh, um, the federal agents, um, and I've met with them, trust me, they, safety is, they're utmost on their mind. So, uh, discussing it in public is probably more unsafe than allowing them to do their work in the, in the event that we need them.
Okay, so we have to wait and see.
Wait.
Okay.
Thank you, Margie. Um, Michelle.
Thank you. Um, unrelated to our last topic, um, is there an update on nine little hot road?
Dan Scrip.
Yeah, they, um, there's a delay in the process. It's funny, you mentioned, I literally just emailed Brendan Mocker, uh, Attorney General's Office, the US Attorney General's Office, find out what's going on. The last I heard, they were looking for a confirmatory deed. And what that means, there was some sort of hiccup in the line of, uh, the line of ownership proceeding of the past few years. So they're trying to fix something. It's not at all unusual. We had to do it from Coast Guard Housing, so it just takes some time. And, um, once I hear back from, um, the US Attorney's Office, I'll inform Tony and then you can ask him directly.
Um, is there a target date in which they want to set the closing with the buyer?
As soon as possible. No, there's no particular date, but as soon as possible.
Is the deal in jeopardy if there's a delay with HUD?
Not that I know of. It's not the HUD's delay. It's, um, because it's something with a deed. Um, so I, I don't think it's in jeopardy, just a procedural thing. And I do believe we had a PNS, there was a PNS sign, so that's fine. I don't think they can walk away from that.
That sounds great. Thanks, Dan.
Hey Tony, anything else?
Uh, Brendan's at, has his hand up.
Two Summer Street in Hot Mass. Um, question with the, uh, the drone, um, survey that was done. I think you'd said they were going to be potentially having a, uh, public presentation. Is there any update on that?
Uh, so yeah, we, we met with them. We, we finally got our, uh, we got view of um, the drone survey work that they did and the program that they utilized. Um, and so they came out in July, I think of last year or August. It was late last year. And I asked them if they could, uh, come out again and just do the town beaches. Um, one of the really cool part of the, the application that we're working on is it's a comparison. So the drone footage that they take, they actually can read volume of material on the beach. And that application, once you have, you know, your base and then a follow-up, you can actually, you know, visually and quickly, uh, measure, you know, how that volume changed over the winter, um, or, you know, more importantly, um, immediately following a storm. It's much like a GIS program, but it's a little bit more user friendly. Uh, so what I'd like to do, it really is, you know, just looking at the base is like looking at, you know, a satellite view of Google Maps. So it's not really that impressive. You, of, of course, you can, um, you know, do some quick measurements and of volume and stuff, but really the, uh, the uh, off factor comes when you have two, two, uh, you know, different timeframes to compare. So I may wait until they come out a second time and then do the presentation after that so that we can show people, um, you know, the, the effectiveness of the program. Or, you know, or maybe I'll do it sooner than that.
Okay, I guess the follow-up question is, um, talking about storms, like, is, if there was a storm, do you, do we have a company on contract or retain to perform, um, you know, immediate assessment after a storm event?
Yeah, this company, um, what I, what I want to do is, I want to have them on contract to basically come out and twice a year and measure the beaches. Um, and then they're on, on call. Obviously, it costs, uh, depend, it's a per call, but um, if we had a storm, I could have them come out immediately following a storm. And that, and not only, it's amazing, this technology right on the program, they can, you know, add a mark. They can take measurements, they can add notes, they can upload on the field pictures. And then they can just run a report of all of those new pieces. And it's, it's like the exact information and paperwork that you would submit to FEMA, you know, in a state of emergency, uh, for, um, recovery funds. Um, so, and it, and it's, it's, it's really, really not, it's a really nice application. Um, they, they're already doing this, uh, for a community down on the, on the Cape. Uh, so we're trying to follow that model.
No, that's great to hear. Thank you for all the hard work on that.
Thank you.
Thanks Brendan. Anybody else, Tony?
Just, uh, unmute, go ahead and unmute yourself, name, say your name and address, please.
Uh, are you talking to me? It's Rebecca Demetrick. Hello?
Sure, go ahead and say your name and address, please.
Thanks so much. Rebecca Demetrick, P O Box sixty-five Moss Landing, California, nine five zero three nine.
Stop for a minute. Uh, town council, correct me if I, I'm, I'm not going to take comments from people, uh, non-residents. Do I need to do that?
I believe you do have the discretion, yeah.
Okay, now, we're not going to take comments from non-residents at this point. Thank you.
Uh, Francine? Oh, you're still muted there.
Sorry about that. Mark, I'm just curious, how come you don't want to hear what Rebecca has to say?
Because this is a resident's forum, and she's not a resident in the heart, that's why.
Well, I, all right, I think she might have some, an interesting perspective that is worth listening to. I, I, it's your discretion, you're the selectman, but just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, thank you.
I, I wish you would consider just at least, let's hear what she says.
Rochelle?
Hi Rochelle Pepple Bianco, one thirty-one Castle Road in Hunt. I would like to, um, have Rebecca talk on my behalf. I, as a resident of Nahand, I would like to hear what she has to say. As I think other residents would also like to hear. Maybe they're not on this particular Zoom meeting. But I think all of Massachusetts needs to listen to what other people have to say, not just residents of Nahand. Thank you.
Thank you Rochelle. This is a resident forum, so I, we're gonna, we're gonna keep it a resident forum. We begin, we, we, once we begin going down that road, this can become a public forum for the whole country. And you know what? I'm not going there. This is a resident forum. This is a meeting of the Board of Selectmen for the town on the heart, and we're going to stick to that.
Short decision.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any others, Tony?
I don't see anyone else, uh, with their hand up, if there's anyone else.
Yeah, thanks. I, I just wanted to reiterate a couple of things. I mean, you know, I, I come from a town that has open town meeting, and I can tell you, they never had residence forums at the selectman's meeting. They're all very controlled. Uh, and, you know, I, I appreciate, you know, the people have the ability to get on and talk to you, uh, in the forum, uh, for that. So, uh, you know, I support the resident forum that you, you do. And I appreciate the work that you do. I also want to, uh, follow up on Tony's comments about Memorial Day in a positive respect. Uh, you know, it was the American Legion's privilege to be able to work with the Memorial Day Committee to come up with the funding for that sound system. Uh, we had some incredible feedback and I'm sure, you know, there's, there's many people here who are, uh, online and, uh, reading the comments, but uh, I mean, I was interested in what people had to say and solicited it because I was blown away being on the wharf, looking up and seeing everybody standing at attention. As you said, it was amazing. I think the only time people heard the words that were spoken were during COVID, during the pre-recorded ceremony. Uh, but you know, even comments from folks like, uh, you know, uh, I wanted Jack Gavin's comment, but I don't have it in the email right here in front of me. But I mean, people were just blown away having heard the words. And they even heard them on the street that was out there. So, uh, we look forward to helping the town continue that. I, and I also want to give out a special shout out to the, to, to the DPW, to Zach and his team. Because they really, they're working from the beginning of March. And also, uh, you know, uh, Dave Wilson and the others at the cemetery, uh, who take it from the winter gray to the May green, uh, and all of the work that's there. So thank you to the town for the support of not only the veterans, uh, but the community. Uh, and, and also, of course, a great shout out for our, this heritage you have of the Gettysburg Address. What an amazing thing. And to see the past winners step up after. I was especially blown away to see, uh, uh, oh, shoot, Ed Poole and, and his son Brandon get up for having done, done it. I mean, talk about heritage. Uh, what a great town we live in. So thank you guys, appreciate it.
Bob, I don't know how the Memorial Day Committee did it, but during the Gettysburg Address, a wind blew from the hot road towards, um, Ellingwood Chapel and grabbed flowers out of the trees like confetti. It was, it was like an amazing moment. Um, I don't know how, I don't know how they do it, but thank you for, um, thank you for recognizing the team at the cemetery. I forgot to mention them. Um, they do an amazing job. There's so many people to mention. Um, it's really, it's really a group effort and so I'll just say thank you to everybody and, uh, for, for participating in that. Uh, Kate Alice.
Can you hear me?
Yes, can you just say your name and address?
Carrie Alice Collins, twenty-two Brazil Terrace. Um, I want to thank, uh, the DPW guys I bumped into. I was trying to, uh, hang my family's pride flag on the community board uh, very awkwardly, and they came up and they offered to help. They offered to put it on a flagpole for me and hung it for me, um, on the community board. But I just want to ask the selectman and Tony, is it something you guys could get down with is actually hanging a pride flag in June? Um, in public to support the community? I know it's been done before, year, in years before, and I've actually asked a couple of years before and it was done. But could you maybe put it on the radar to do it every year, even if it's just June first? Um, you know, it's an international symbol in June uh, for community, for support and diversity. And I, I just was hoping that maybe you guys could, uh, put it on your radar.
It's on our radar. Um, it's definitely on our radar. It's something that we support. Uh, we've been doing it, you know, for the last, I, I want to say four years now. Um, and the only, the issue this year was we couldn't get a flag in time for June first. Um, so, you know, I, it, it was simply just that. Um, but we were attempting to, and yes, we stand with, we stand with what, you know, Pride Month and June stands for and, um, are happy to participate in that.
Just aim for June first. That's all.
We were trying and thank you for coming to our rescue.
I kind of waited and waited and hoped to see one, but I just really feel like, um, if it's something, you know, the town can get down doing every year, I would just really appreciate it.
Yep, absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Okay.
That it?
That's it.
And thank you, Tony. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I move the Board of Selectmen adjourn.
Seconded. Discussion on the motion here in that will go vote.
Josh Antrima.
Matt Kellernite. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.